I'm on. I'm on. I'd like to call to order the Planning Board meeting for Thursday, November 11th. If everybody could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am hoping that we have Planning Board members that are somewhere in cyberspace. Otherwise, we're going to have a big problem here. Okay, we do. I see, okay, I see Paul, I see Jerry, I see Amber. So on Zoom, we have Paul Amatucci, we have Jerry Graybill, we have Amber Fecto. And onsite, we have Mike LaRue, we have Jennifer McCabe, our Co-Enforcement Officer, we have Lee J. Feldman, our interim town planner. Does that sound right?
Sure.
He's also the Planning Director for Southern Main Planning and Development Company, or Corporation, whatever it is. And we have James Belissimo, who is our town manager. Before I open the first public comment session, I would like to thank the folks in Berwick for coming out to vote. We had a really great turnout, and our land use ordinances were passed, which shows me that we did a good job explaining to the town exactly what we were trying to do and why we were trying to do it, and the people in the town understood that. So that's good, good job. So I'm going to open the first public comment session. Public comment is open to property owners and residents of the town of Berwick for anything under the purview of the Berwick Planning Board that is not an active agenda or application. Anybody? Seeing nobody come up, I'm going to close the public comment session and move on to the approval of minutes from the October 21st, 2021 meeting. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes?
Yeah, I found something. The regular member absent, I was there. It says that I wasn't, Allison was the one that was absent.
Oops.
Okay. Other than that, everything else seemed good.
Amber, did you find anything with the minutes that Jen missed?
No, I don't see anything other than that.
Okay, great. Paul?
No, it looks fine to me.
Great, and Jerry?
No, I'm good.
Awesome. So with that being said, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I move.
I'll make that motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Okay, I have a motion from Paul. I need a second.
I'll second.
All right, seconded by Mike LaRue. All in favor?
Hi.
All right, that looks like 5-0. The minutes have passed. Thank you very much. Moving on to old business, the first item on our agenda for old business is the final plan meeting for the major subdivision, which is the seven multifamily unit in the existing building at 170 Pine Hill Road, which is in the R1 and R2 zone, and it's Jerry Latart's property. James?
Tonight, this project is up for final approval. I'll just go over a summary of where we're at today. Jerry Latart has requested a seven-unit multifamily dwelling at 170 Pine Hill Road, each with three bedrooms. It's an existing building. And this building was constructed years ago, and the use had lapsed, and that's why he's back for approval. The building is currently condemned at the time of application, and there are severe mold issues identified in the mold study by Absolute Resource Associated, which has been remediated in the mold areas identified. A structural analysis was completed by JSN Associates, which identified several issues with the building, but they did deem it salvageable. And there's a report that has many recommendations in the file. And we had several consultants take a look at the building height, and the average height, which is our ordinance requirements, is less than maximum allowable. A public hearing was held on October 21st, and we had no butters to speak. I can go over some of the findings of fact. So 11.1 with pollution, prior mold issues were remediated, and there's a condition of approval. Number three, and it's deemed necessary during the routine inspections, a second mold evaluation should be completed by a third party, shall be required if any other areas are suspected of mold, and that's at the applicant's expense. The other, most of these findings are pretty standard. Berwick Water will serve the property. There is a stormwater and erosion control plan that has been submitted. No adverse traffic impacts. I'll just make a note that a dumpster will be enclosed and screened. Very important, we don't want to deal with ongoing non-screen dumpsters. Conditions have been established, Conditions 1 and 2 for the technical capacity to ensure that Jerry has the resources he needs. An architect or engineer shall inspect the building construction on a weekly basis. That's also put on their plan, and the site work on a bi-weekly basis. Last part, the building will be sprinkled, and that will be inspected by the state fire marshal. That's, I believe that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, so we've gone through this, and Mr. Latart and company have been great about accommodating every, every single thing that we have asked of them. They've, they've agreed to. So what we will need to do is approve the findings of fact, and then the conditions of approval, and then the final plan. Is that my, yes? All right, so does anybody from the board have any questions, or concerns, or comments on this? Okay, I see nobody come forward. I'm going to be looking for a motion to approve the findings of fact on this.
I move that we approve the findings of fact.
Okay, moved by Mike LaRue. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, seconded by Jerry. Any further discussion on the findings of fact that James just went over? Okay, seeing none, I will take a vote. All in favor? Okay, so that's 5-0 to approve the findings of fact. And then James went over the three conditions of approval, so I'm going to need a motion to approve the conditions of approval.
I move to accept the conditions of approval.
All right, moved by Mike LaRue, and I'm looking for a second.
I'll second.
All right, seconded by Paul Amatucci. Any further discussion on the conditions? Okay, seeing no further discussion, I will take a vote on approving the conditions. All in favor? All right, and that's 5-0 on the conditions. So finally, I just need somebody, a motion to approve the project.
I'll make a motion to approve the project.
All right, so moved by Paul, and I need a second on that.
I will second.
Seconded by Jerry. All in favor of approving the final plan. And that is approved, 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Latart.
Thank you.
Mike LaRue, do you prefer Mike or Michael in the minutes?
Either or.
What do you prefer?
I go by both.
Moving on to the next order of business. In old business, we are going to see the sketch plan for the major subdivision at 259 School Street. This is in the R2 zone. SOW Solar is the applicant. Who do we have here for the applicant today?
Michael's online.
Okay.
I'm here, Madam Chair.
Oh, hi, Michael. How are you today?
Good, how are you?
Great. So we see that you have submitted a cluster. Just, would you like to go over what you guys have done?
Yeah, I'd be happy to share my screen to facilitate a few.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you very much.
Great. You see all right? What's up? Okay, thank you. Yeah, for the record, Michael Sudak at Tower Engineering, here on behalf of NH Solar Garden and SOW Solar Incorporated. So for the residential side of this development, we presented, I believe, in the middle of last month, a conventional subdivision, proposing 11 lots on this 22-acre subdivided parcel of the overall 66 and 1/2 acres on the corner of School Street Heritage Drive. So the board tasked us with coming back and proposing a cluster subdivision. This is my first blush attempt, trying to pay consideration to some of the areas that the board highlighted and that Lee J. highlighted at the last meeting. So what we've got is the same 11 lots. We're preserving the vast majority of the critical terrestrial habitat here in the north off the significant Earl Pool. The vast majority of the existing field and farmland up front along School Street, about 175 feet of it to the rear yard property line, and then through deed restrictions and just building envelopes on viable uplands, probably another 100 or so feet will be preserved. And then to the west, the entire Malloy Brook stream bed, and a considerable portion of the surrounding area as well, all to be put in open space, I believe, right around 59% open space proposed. So I believe that this is the best iteration that matches the intent of what was requested. And I know an overall plan was also requested by the board and by Lee J., but I can move into that after we have any discussion here. I'd be happy to take questions.
Lee J.?
Oh, you're looking at me?
I'm looking at you. Yes, get your microphone, please.
All right, I'll get my microphone. You're very welcome. Michael, was any consideration given to moving the internal road down Heritage Drive closer towards School Street and trying to cluster most of the lots internally? I mean, you've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 6 lots that are going to take curb cuts off from Heritage. And it seems like, you know, I'm still not convinced that you couldn't do something with a cul-de-sac that allows you to take most of the lots internally.
Yeah, so I went back and forth a couple different times on having that road moved kind of parallel down the page, if you will, the Hammerhead. So having that come further south and then having lots on either side. But really, the issue I wound up with was the area I'd be developing in that hypothetical would be in, would be either incurring a greater amount of wetland impacts, just from having to get the road back to where I'd need to drop a lollipop. And also, all of the lots would be in the area that the board specifically highlighted they would like to be preserving. You know, if the cul-de-sac was any further south, and I would then pursue to have frontage lots coming off of that, I'd be using all of the area that, you know, I believe Madam Chair brought up at the last meeting. People have been looking at this as a field and a farmland for hundreds of years. And we, I thought this was a more reasonable alternative to preserving as much of it as possible, as opposed to endeavoring to have a cul-de-sac and fit as many lots off of that as possible. I do understand the frontage lots and the component of this development that that proposes, but the majority of those would be, I think, 1, 2, 3, all four of these would be back in the tree line. And I know I've mentioned with you, I believe I mentioned it at the last meeting, we'd be endeavoring to have deed restrictions in these rear yards to keep this critical terrestrial habitat. Candidly, I took a lot of cracks in this one, and I feel like this is the best combination of being respectful to the board's wishes while also making the most sense of the upland that I could utilize.
Michael, can I ask, is Lot 5 and Lot 6 going to be getting their access from the, from Heritage or from the internal road?
The intense Heritage.
Okay.
There's adequate, there's adequate frontage for both, but, you know, you kind of have a, either a hot dog or a hamburger lot, if you will.
Right.
I know it's very kind of crass language, but yeah, the potential's there for both.
Right. I just see that you're requesting a waiver so that you can have all of those driveways off Heritage. I think I would prefer to see as much coming off of that internal road as possible. I don't know, I don't know what the rest of the board is thinking, or Lee J., but I absolutely open it up to you guys to talk about. That's just something that I'm thinking is that. Lee J.?
Oh.
What do you think? You know, there's a clip on that, you can put it right on your shirt.
Yeah, I know, but I'm sharing it, so I want to make sure it's available, so Jen doesn't grab me by the collar.
She will.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, I think, you know, I think the Planning Board itself needs to really weigh in here, but I'm still not convinced. I mean, I think that, that a shift in the roads' access on Heritage and bringing a cul-de-sac in. But, but beyond that, I think what we, you know, in order to achieve what I think the board is trying to achieve with clustering, would be to look at shrinking the lot sizes to, I want to say, the minimum lot size, the, you know, 20, 25,000 square feet. Some of the lots are 30,000 square feet, which is, you know, pretty small in, you know, as it relates to septic systems. But I think there's ways to shrink the lot sizes and maximize that. And certainly, I hear what Michael's saying about the, you know, respecting the wetlands and everything, and I think there's still a way to do that, and that would be deed restricting how much land in those lots that might be in the forested areas to how much, you know, how much tree cutting could actually occur on any one of those lots to preserve most of the lots. I mean, I'm, I'm working in other communities where they're now even signing no-cut zones on lots, so that people realize.
We have some of that over here, too.
Yeah, and so, I mean, I, I realize this is a second, second shot, maybe a third shot at it, but, you know, maybe, maybe I could work with Michael internally, off, off, off the meeting grid, if you will, and try to come up with something a little more. And I understand, we, Michael and I talked about this, he sent it to me before you folks got it, and certainly, you know, they're trying to sell some lots with frontage on Heritage so they can generate cash to be able to build the internal road. But I just think that that's an awful lot of lots fronting on, on Heritage.
Along with a road.
A lot of curb cuts, yes.
Yeah, so you've got nine, you've essentially got nine curb cuts.
Yeah, so my thought, you know, depending on where the board wants to take this, that I still think something different could occur.
Yeah, I'd love to hear from the board. Mike, do you have anything?
Yeah, no, I agree with that, with both of them. I think that having more curb cuts on the new road would be nicer than having it on Heritage. Smaller lot sizes and maybe making it, I agree with him.
Yeah, I think you did, I think it's a good job. I just, we, we're doing this with a few developments right now, the one, the Morrel Farm one, and that one was pretty significantly different. This one looks a lot the same, but I can see there's a lot of wetlands and whatnot. Paul, do you have any comments or questions on this?
No, actually, you preempted it by talking about the curb cuts, because it just looks like there are way too many that are going direct onto Heritage for me. If there's a way to, you know, design this, to have those cuts on the interior road, I think that'd be the way to go.
Yeah, I agree. Jerry?
Just looking at what you're saying, everybody, I think, has done, you know, what was asked, but agreeing with everyone with the curb cuts. Could lots 4, where is it here? 4 and 5 be turned so that they face into the new road the same way as 6 and 7, so they would not be going towards Heritage? Then you would lose, you know, 4 curb cuts on Heritage.
So can I ask a question?
Of course you can.
Can I ask a couple?
Into the microphone. Yeah, go for it.
Here's my question. Okay, and this, this is going to be a question for, because Heritage Drive is already a subdivision.
Yeah.
So how do I want to ask this appropriately? Ready for this, Lee J.? Sorry.
Make sure you're talking into the mic so that we get it.
Okay, so my question is, the way these lots are laid out, okay? If we leave them like this, so it's, this, this is going to look like it's part of Heritage subdivision.
I agree.
How close are these houses, what, what are the houses going to look like, I guess is my question? How close are they? Because you drive up Heritage Drive, those houses are beautiful. They're well-maintained, like, they do a really nice job up there.
Yeah.
So on the other side of the road, I guess I would have to know what they're trying to accomplish to see, like, you can't, you can't drive up one side of the road, it has to match the characteristics of the neighborhood, right? So you can't drive up one side of the road and have all these lots that don't match the other side of the road. So just keep that in mind, because that's in our land use.
Yeah. I agree.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
I'm happy you brought that up. Honestly, that is what our first blush intent was to, and that's why a conventional subdivision was originally proposed. These lots across the street on Heritage are conventional lots. They're considerably larger than what's proposed here. And the original standard application was in an attempt to have the frontage lots here be in the spirit of replicating what was across the street to try and, you know, not kind of get that, like, head cock from people that are coming up, looking at one side, seeing something, looking at the other, and seeing something completely different. So I'm glad you brought that up, because that kind of brings me back to what I originally thought was the best use for this piece of land. But if I can also circle back to Jerry's comments, so I'm going to zoom in here for a second, if I can. There we go, okay. So all of these lots, let's see, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8 are all 100 by 300. That's your max length-to-width ratio by ordinance standard. So effectively, three of them stacked together, 300 by 300 block. So if I could rotate all three of these, 3, 4, and 5, 90 degrees, to then have, if you can see my cursor, a 100 by 300 with three different curb cuts coming off of this proposed road on either side. You know, we would still have two frontage lots up here for 1 and 2, but then the remaining 3 through 11 would then be off of this proposed road. You're occupying the exact same space, you're just rotating the lots 90 degrees.
Madam Chair? Oh. Are you set for now, Mike?
Yeah, I'm.
So, so I tend, you know, I tend to, tend to agree with you, Michael, on, on, if you look at the concept of the original layout, that works better. But what I would suggest is, you know, you could do a couple of things. Yes, you could move Lot 3 off from being a linear, a deep lot off from Heritage and bring it up along the cul-de-sac road behind Lot 4, if you will. And I think, again, these lots on this original layout are, you know, an acre, acre and a half, rather than 30,000 square feet. I think if you shrink the size of the lots, using the basic concept that you have from the original design, you're going to have a lot of open space. And that even, that even goes for lots 6, 7, and 8 along School Street. I'd pull the lots right away from School Street and use that as open space and have smaller lots. And Lot 5 and Lot 4, 7 and 8 are going to take their access off from the internal road. And then 9, 10, and 11, again, you can shrink the lot size so that the lots themselves aren't encumbering Malloy Brook. And, you know, that's going to achieve a lot more than, than the second concept that you have.
I also think, I mean, the, the cluster concept, if you look at across the street on Heritage Drive, there's four houses there. And so the cluster, you have eight houses in the same amount of space, essentially, and it looks like you're just trying to jam as many houses in there as possible, which is not the spirit of clustering. I mean, I like, I like Lee J., I like your idea, shrinking those down, taking more access from the internal road, not having nine curb cuts on Heritage. Or maybe get rid of a couple lots on the cluster. I mean, I understand you want to get as many, you do want to get as many houses in there, but if we are trying to mimic the feel of, of Heritage, you know, you've got, you can't have eight houses facing four houses. It will look ridiculous. Yeah.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I can't see through the video. Who's that that's been speaking just now?
Me, Madam Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry, I lost the mask, okay. I'm sorry, I thought it was someone else.
Okay, no, no, no. It's, I think it's me and Jenny. We're going back and forth between me and Jen.
Gotcha.
Yeah, that's just, you know, my thinking.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't want to challenge that thought process. I guess I'm just looking, I feel like I'm getting a little bit of conflicting information here. So in my mind, the, the purpose of clustering would be to preserve a greater degree, by virtue of additional open space, preserving areas that should be preserved. In the case of this lot, we have the Malloy Brook stream channel, we have the critical terrestrial habitat, we have as much of the existing farmland as possible.
Yes.
I, I mean, clustering, I would contend, kind of is jamming lots in a specific area, maybe just an area that is most suitable and preserves other areas that should be preserved. Like, I'm, I'm hearing one thing that.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I'm just looking, looking at it from a, on a, you know, on a piece of paper, that's what it looks like.
And it has to.
Yeah.
And it does have to fit in with the rest of the neighborhood. So if you want all of the curb cuts to be on Heritage, it has to look like Heritage. And that's.
Yes.
You know, that is what it is.
I hear the comment loud and clear about the number of curb cuts along Heritage, that that's understood, but I feel, I would contend that even if the hypothetical I brought before it, if lots 3, 4, and 5, and then 6, 7, and 8 are just rotated 90 degrees, so you have two frontage lots and then nine clustered lots off this road. You're still going to have lots jammed together adjacent to Heritage Drive with very little buffering, because.
Well, if you turn those 3 90 degrees, well, the 3 and the 3, if you turn them 90 degrees, you'd only have one lot on Heritage Road on one side of the road and then one lot on the other. You'd have all the curb cuts, and like you said, it'd just be on.
Yeah, you're not going to see it driving down Heritage.
Right.
That's it, you're not going to.
You might see a couple houses, but it, it's not going to be right there.
Right.
Okay, you would still see 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and probably 5, if 5 is here along the road. You wouldn't see, you'd see two less houses. You'd still see six of them stacked together right here.
Well, I think they just said, turn, if you turned 6 and 7.
Yes.
Well.
That's all, that's all field right now. I mean.
Right.
Well, but, but again.
We haven't gotten into buffers yet, so.
Yeah, I mean, Michael, I think that, I think that if you, you know, it's one thing to lay the lots out, and, and I've been doing a quick look here at the original subdivision. If you take lots 1, 2, and 3, keep them laid out the way they are, but cut them in half so that all of the wetland and the terrestrial buffer area is, are pretty close to it, is preserved, because it's not part of a lot that anybody can go in and cut or do anything to. do anything to. And then if you take, you know, you put a curb opening on the internal roadway on lot four and on lot five, and then, you know, lot eight, um, you shrink the size of that lot by cutting off the portion that fronts on School Street, so that that's open space there. And you can shrink lots nine, 10, and 11 in half and pull them away from Malloy Brook, so you're preserving that, that area as well. I think that does a really nice job, and then, I think we need to really talk about, um, where you place the homes. Like, on lot four, um, you know, you put the, the building envelope area and require it to be on the internal side of the, of the, the lot, so that it's not down near Heritage. And lot five, you can require that they put the lot, the house on the inside of that wetland area, there's a big enough envelope on the backside of lot five, so that they're not seen or not directly up on the Heritage area. I mean, I think there's some real design considerations with the first design that you provided, that can actually work pretty well, if we just think outside the box a little bit.
And, this is Jen talking now, Mike, just to let you know.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I think that Lee J is onto something, and I think he's correct. I think for you to have this subdivision, um, and I'm not the board, so, just to let you know, I'm just the code enforcement officer, but, um, I think you need to separate them from subdivision to subdivision, because if you keep this new plan, it looks like it's all one subdivision. But if you could see Lee J's piece of paper, cause he's drawn it out with blue pen, I know you can't see it, um, it makes a lot of sense, and it would definitely put like a buffer in between them, so then you're not so, you know, it's not so similar at that point.
What, what is the them, that in, the operative that you're describing?
The houses, sorry.
But, so, you're talking about the Heritage development and, and my proposed development?
Yeah, so, if you could see Lee J's design, you would understand what we mean a little bit more, um.
Yeah.
But if you take the original design and you do what Lee J's telling you to do, what it does is it pushes the house, it pushes all the houses.
Suggested.
Suggested, sorry. Um, it pushes the houses way back from Heritage, so it doesn't look like it's all one subdivision. If you're driving up Heritage right now and these houses were there, it would look like all one subdivision. That's just my take on it.
It would, but it would look like what happened.
What happened, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Amber, do you have any, um, ideas, questions, concerns, or comments?
I don't have any ideas, um, I'm just trying to figure out where the compromise is.
Yeah.
Um, it's a tough one.
Yeah.
Sounds like I'm gonna have to bring you on to payroll, Lee J.
Uh, I'd prefer not, but I think I can work with you on this.
So, I, I just wanna, I, I appreciate all the conversation, everyone, um, I just want to have kinda one line in the sand for on it, if I may. So, what I'm gathering is that the board would like clust, a cluster development moving forward, but they would like for a distinction to be made, um, through separation and distance, through the orientation of more lots off of the proposed road, through buffering, if we need to get there, and I think we're going to have to get there to, to truly capture what everyone's describing, um, to separate this development.
Can I see this?
And its intent from the existing Heritage Drive development and how that looks.
I think you, yes, Michael, I think that's, um, I think that you have that.
Fair enough.
Um, and it sounds like Lee J is willing to, um, you know, meet with you, work with you, he's got a whole drawing in front of him already, he loves, he loves this stuff.
I'll do, I'll do a, I'll do a hand, hand markup of, of the plan back in my office, Michael, and get something to you, probably eight and a half by 11 or whatever, I can't scan it, plan size, but, um, just so you can see.
I'm used to handwritten lines.
Yeah, just so you can see, um, what, what I'm thinking about, and you can take it from there and, and fix it up a little bit.
Is everybody on the board okay with that?
Yes.
Yes?
Actually.
Okay, it looks like everybody is, so it sounds like we are going to send you back to Sketch and see you when we see you.
Um, is there another issue with, um, this is part of a major subdivision, right?
Oh, yes.
And, uh, DEP, is that?
Well, Michael, can you, can you tell us how the solar project, which abuts this and was part of the mother parcel, um, fits into this whole scheme, um, relevant to the local approval, as well as any DEP permitting that may be required?
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad you, you br, you brought it up, I, I have, um, Andrew Keller of NA Solar Garden here with me, who's, um, been my, my go with for the other half of what we're doing with this parcel, and, um, I know it's the same layout, I'm gonna switch screens real quick, um, and maybe zoom in a little bit. So, we've rotated 90 degrees, but, um, you have to answer your question first. So, our access off Heritage Drive, um, however many curb cuts we end up having, we're going to need to have at least one, um, will require the amendment of the DEP permit, um, that's associated with this development. And we've had some back and forth with, um, the state and with, uh, the town's attorney on the vehicle that we need to drive to get to that point. Um, I can't remember if correspondence for that went to the board, I know James is in possession of it. Um, so, granting or, uh, allowing us to modify that will be by virtue of, um, an entrance permit for whatever development we end up having. And, um, if there are any subsequent frontage lots, then that would have to be something we discuss, but they would be roped in as well, and we would have to, you know, um, engineer some, some driveway culverts, some crossings of those, um, curb cuts, just to ensure that the, the vegetated swale that goes down to the detention pond that's here on the corner of School Street is, is maintained in the spirit of the permit, um, for that whole development, um, that was turned over to the town, or at least the road was turned over to the town. Um, and extrapolating from there, so whatever, whatever configuration we have for the residential side, be it the cul-de-sac, wherever it ends up being, we're going to have, um, our gravel access drive come off of that and then enter into the back portion of the parcel, the 44 and a half acres, um, that's left, and this is where our solar development's going to take place. Um, and we've, uh, we had Sketch for that, I believe, way back in April, um, we submitted, uh, site review for that, I believe in September, um, so I know the request was made, um, at the last meeting on the residential side, just to see how the two are married, so, uh, here you go. But, yeah, um, I'd, uh, I guess that, that puts a bow on what I have to say, um, I'd be interested if there are any questions on that half.
Lee J, anything?
Well, I guess my question still is, Michael, that, that where this was all, I'm assuming one parcel at one point, and the solar property was split off, while it's not a lot, the, it's the first dividing, so it's not a lot in the subdivision, um, but still needs to be considered as part of the review, but I'm wondering if DEP is going to want to take into consideration the residential portion of this development as part as the, as part of the overall approval process?
Are you, like, common scheme of development here?
Yes.
Yeah, so I've, um, I had an initial pre-application meeting for this development, uh, in its Sketch iteration from back, that the town saw in April, um, so the residential component wasn't a part then, um, we didn't know about the protocol, we didn't know about anything. So we, we've re-envisioned the, the solar development side, a couple times now, I've kept up with DEP on how things have changed, and, um, there are different watersheds, actually the, um, the Vernal Pool, um, serves as a pretty good, um, watershed divide, where the entire solar development will come down into the Malloy Brook channel, and the entire residential side, you can tell from the, the wetlands here and how they come through the site from, from left to right, there's two culvert crossings of School Street here, those will be your analysis points for the stormwater analysis on the residential side. Um, so, in my mind, they're, they're separate analysis, um, or they, they warrant separate stormwater analyses, because they're separate watersheds, separate analysis points, um, I can understand the common scheme of development component of it, but, um, I, I guess I, I, um, would question whether or not the two should be grouped together, just because of where the, the, the subcatchment divides take place on, on the parcel.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm just asking it, I'm gonna let you.
Yeah.
Run with the DEP on the permitting aspect.
Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments on this one? All right, thank you, Michael.
Okay.
We'll see you back here soon, and we will move forward.
Yeah, Lee J, um, feel free to reach out to me at, at your leisure.
Yes, no, I, I will be in touch, um, it won't, probably won't be tomorrow, but I will be in touch in the next couple of days with you, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike, goodnight.
The next item on our agenda under old business is the preliminary plan for the major subdivision, which is phase, phase four of Heritage Drive. Um, we had a site walk, I wish I could tell you what day it was, but I don't have it right in front of me.
Some Saturday.
It was a Saturday site walk, um, Mike LaRue was there, I was there, Mike Wright was there from Great Works Regional Land Trust, Tom Wright was there, our chair of the Board of Selectmen, we had a bunch of abutters there, we had Lou Chamberlain from Atar, we had Mr. Clement there, who is the property owner, um, we walked about 500 feet up the road, we learned that this project, um, has, is a 20-plus year in the making project, very near and dear to the heart of, um, the property owner, and, uh, we got a good layout of what they want to do. Who's in charge of this one, James?
I can, I got a couple more, this is actually, coincidentally, the.
I don't know who's in.
A butter to the project that was just, um, presented.
Yes, coincidentally.
This is phase four, as mentioned, it's a long time in the making, uh, phase four is proposed to be 18 lots in, within phase four, there's phasing within phase four, so what's proposed is the, the first phase, it'd do six of the 18 lots. So this phase connects Heritage and Elmwood, so it connects from School Street through to Cranberry Meadow. Um, I think Steve and I were talking, um, that, um, he's got some environmental permits that are, that should be in at any time, yeah, come on, come on up, um, but we just wanted to get this on the books, so we can move this forward.
So you wanna know where we stand with DEP?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, they had some, just small concerns on some language, I think some of the stuff on numbers, they had 17 lots, not 18. Um, their concerns were phase three, uh, well-location, when we do the plumes on the septic and where that was, that was taken care of, uh, they came back to the turtle and snake habitat, which was answered by MDI F W. Um, it's, it's just small things, there's like six items on the list that we just got this week, so that all went back yesterday to DEP, so, uh, we, we're hoping to have that done shortly, um, so hopefully we hear from them in a, a week or so, and we should be good.
Great.
So, tonight being preliminary approval, and I guess I'll put Lee J on the spot.
Ha.
With, with preliminary approval for those envi, should, should the board wait for those to come back to approve for preliminary approval, or can they condition it on, based on the environmentals?
Yeah, I mean, preliminary approval is only preliminary, um, he, they can approve preliminary, um, review, with the condition that the DEP permits be submitted as part of the final application, um, that's not a problem at all.
Which is typical anyway, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So the application could be found complete tonight, and if found complete, my suggestion would be a public hearing for the 18th.
Okay. Um, Paul, do you have any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this one and the preliminary plan approval? You're on mute.
I don't. I'm not muted.
No concerns?
No, I haven't, no.
Okay, Jerry?
Not at this time, no.
Nope, I have no comments.
Amber?
No, not at this time.
Mr. LaRue?
No, I'm good at this time.
All right, I don't either, um, the site walk was very informative, very thorough, this is, I mean, this has been through Army Corps of Engineers, it's, there's so much work that has been done with this. Um, so I would, uh, look for a motion to approve the preliminary plan. I mean, do I, hold on, let me retract my, uh, asking for a motion. Do I have to put as a condition on the preliminary that the DEP is submitted as part of the final approval? I thought that was part of final approval anyway.
Well, it is, but I mean, it certainly just covers you, I mean, so that it's a spoken word and everybody knows it.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the preliminary plan with a condition that the DEP paperwork is.
Permit.
Permit is submitted as part of the final approval.
I'll make that motion.
So made, I'm looking for a second?
No second.
All right, seconded by Jerry, all in favor?
Five.
And that's 5-0, so, uh, preliminary plan approval, thank you, Mr. Clement, we will schedule the public hearing for the 18th.
18th.
18th, see you then.
Thank you.
Yep. Moving on to new business, um, site plan expansion, 565 Portland Street, this is in the RCI zone, and it is Route 4 self-storage, is this, Lee J?
This is me.
Feel like I'm playing tennis.
This is kinda like the first project that finally just.
All right.
Completely thrown to me. Um, so, uh, the applicant is proposing to construct, I put, two new storage buildings intended for recre, and intending for recreational vehicles camper trailer storage, along with areas for outdoor vehicle storage, associated accessways, and stormwater management facilities. The previous phase approved in 2020 consisted of nine self-storage buildings, all storage buildings were pre-engineered metal structures, the new buildings will have footprints of 7,150 square feet and 5,200 square feet. Uh, the facility will continue to be remotely managed, no offices proposed on-site, in the area of the proposed vehicular and RV storage, renters will coordinate with remote staff to accommodate drop-off and pickup stored vehicles, um, as needed by appointment. The self-storage facility will be accessible 24 hours a day, seven days a week, through the use of access codes at the security gate. The existing security gate will remain, and the chain-link fence will be relocated and extended as shown on the plan. The vehicular storage will be accessible by appointment only. Access to the self-storage site will be via an existing driveway, access to the vehicular storage will be obtained via Coffin Lane. The 9.9 acre lot has 1.7 acres of wetland in the north and east lotline portion of the lot, as well as running between the existing development and the proposed site. The dimensional requirements have been met. Um, with the development as shown on the plans, the configuration of the proposed development has been designed to avoid major impacts with wetlands. Uh, DEP Site Location and Development Act permit was issued for the 2020 expansion, um, and major amendment approval will be required to be issued by the DEP on this application. Project will require both treatment of the stormwater, um, from the site and control flows from the downstream wetlands and waterways, um, that has also been submitted to the main DEP. Um, I'm gonna skip ahead here, so I'm not going through this whole thing. The applicant, um, is seeking a waiver, um, of the landscaping requirement for the application, which can be found in Article 9, Section 9.8, Point F, Point 2, Point B, Point 6. We need to change that.
There is so much fun to listen to.
Oh, the six is a VI, not a number six.
VI, well, I called it six. Landscaping plan showing location type and approximate size of planting and location dimensions of all fencing and screening is what they're seeking, the waiver. dimensions of all fencing and screening is what they're seeking the waiver of. According to the applicant, the following is justification of the waiver, which they've put in to their request. It is requested that the requirement of submitting a landscaping plan be waived. The site is located 10 feet lower than the adjacent roadway, Portland Street, and is currently developed in the area that is visible from the roadway. A portion of the development on the north side of the lot will be screened by natural vegetation on all sides, with none of the development visible from the roadway. Landscaping would have minimal aesthetic value in this location. The proposed location of the fencing is indicated on Sheet L1. Waiving the requirement would not adversely affect the budding lot landowners or the general health, safety, welfare of the town, and would not nullify the intent or the purpose of the official zoning map, any ordinances, or the comprehensive plan. The applicant is also seeking a waiver of the plan scale requirement due to the size and location, size of the location, which the board is dealing with. In this situation, the scale of the plan being greater than 1 inch equals 40 feet is inconsequential to the application. Completeness, the application is complete, however, prior to finding the application complete, the board should decide if they want to waive the landscaping requirement as requested above. If the wa, if the waivers are granted, the board could determine the application complete. If no waiver is granted, then you will need to wait for the applicant to submit the required materials. Recommendation would be to grant the waivers, find the application complete, and determine if a site walk is required, and set the date for the public hearing. Any conditions of approval will be proposed once the site walk and public hearings have occurred.
That's a mouthful. Who do we have? Is that why Neil was here?
Yep.
Yep.
I was here, but it sounds like Ligia's taking my old job.
No, I'm not coming to work for you either, Neil.
They need it.
I'm sitting at the computer right now, Ligia.
Mr. Reposa.
Yeah, so I know if you want me to just go over, have a brief overview of the development...
That'd be great.
...you got Ligia's presentation there. My name is Mr. Reposa, I'm a civil consultant here on behalf of Route Four Self-Storage. We came through last year with the expansion of that existing self-storage area that was on Route Four. I'll jump up to that plan, just so we have the reference. So, this was the previous, previous development that was approved last year, and as Ligia described, went through the full site location application and approval process at the state. There were some, some tweaks to the existing boundary lines that we had to make to bring that existing storage area into conformance. So, that was done with that prior, with that prior application. We have now combined this, the front lot here, where this initial development was, with the, with the rear lot that gets all the way back into, into the area of the brook back here. And that allows us to come back and utilize this, this back area and access this portion of the lot via an access easement off of Coffin, off of Coffin Lane. I'm not sure if you, if you recall, a while back, it was brought up whether or not we could create a separate lot out here for development, and it was determined that there would be, it was just too complex out here trying to bring this now abandoned town road, now it's a private road, into conformance to create frontage. However, since we're combining these two lots now, our frontage is all on Route Four, and Coffin Lane's just a means to access the, you know, the back portion of the development. With this new portion of the proposed development here, we're trying to impact as little wellend as possible and still utilize all of the, the usable upland on the area. So, what's proposed on, for this portion is a larger, a larger development that's down off of the Coffin, Coffin Lane here, that will have the two pre-engineered structures for internal, you know, covered RV and, and trailer storage. It is proposed currently that the smaller, the smaller building here will have an open, open front or be a canopy-type structure, not fully enclosed. But in speaking with Chief Platt, he said that it would probably make the most sense to go ahead and, and get the separation of these buildings as if they were gonna be completely enclosed and used as storage buildings, just to have that option in the future. And we decided to, to go with that idea and, and push that out. So, we have a little bit, little bit more room around this building now to just allow for that in the future. We tried to take advantage as much as possible of, of the natural buffering we have here to the stream. There is the 75-foot setback that we need to keep here for that stream protection district. So, we've kept that, kept that undeveloped, and at the same time, we've utilized a portion of, of the, you know, kind of the extra woodland we have here. It's still in great, great condition and available for use for treatment, and we've swelled a lot of the, a lot of the runoff coming from, from our new impervious area here where the parking is into these two larger level spreaders. They'll then be treated by that, by that buffer going down, going down to the waterway here. On the other side here, we're, we're gonna have a gravel outdoor storage area here, and that's gonna be the same thing. We're gonna be gently bringing all that flow into another level spreader and utilize a fairly long buffer there to get the treatment we need. There is one grass filter here that will be an under-drain filter that will provide treatment for the remaining, remaining area here and some of, some of the, the smaller building. The point with this one was we were trying to get kind of the, the least maintenance possible required out here, just due to the fact that it is, you know, a remote portion of the site. And we tried to get the majority of the runoff treated with, with these level spreaders, the wood and buffers, which do require some maintenance, but not nearly as much as, as these, you know, the structural BMPs. So, that's, that's really the, the long and short of it here. This will be going in, as Ligia said, for an amendment to that site location application. Everything's been submitted, and now we're just in that, in that waiting game with the DEP, waiting for them to, to get it to the front of their desk and, and get the review in. I've, I've spoke with them several times about it, and they, they haven't come up, they haven't given me any, anything to work on as far as things they initially saw that needed to be changed. So, my hope is it'll, this is pretty much the layout you're gonna see, and not have any changes from, from the state portion of it. But they haven't, as I said, they haven't gotten their official review, and so we're just kinda waiting for that, for that portion.
Thanks, Neil. Is, so where the, where the gravel, proposed gravel storage parking area is, is there a reason why it says possible well-location? Why would we put a well out there?
I could, I put a well-location out there just in case, in the future, they needed to, it is doing flushing of those, of the, any RV tanks.
Okay.
And as far as filling them up for, for any reason. It's really, that could be taken off the plan. We're, I'm not sure how, how viable it's, it's going to be going forward. I don't know, Tanner, if you wanna jump in about how you wanted to utilize any kind of water that was...
Yeah, there, there is no intent to doing that. We were, had multiple things that we were thinking about doing prior to this final, and so that, that was on there for that, but it can be taken off as we don't need it.
Yeah, I think if it's not gonna be needed or anything, just so that nobody's confused about the intent in the future to take that off.
We can do that, yeah. That's something always, if, if something needs to be slated out there, we can come back for, for that as well, so.
Yeah, plus, if you're flushing RV tanks, I imagine there must be some kind of catch...
Oh, no, I, I wouldn't say flushing.
Oh, okay.
It could just be, do like, fill, like before they go out, something like that. And that's, and also, if it's not, if it's not needed, we can take that.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. LaRue, do you have any questions? You wanna look at the big plans?
No, it seems pretty, pretty cut and dry.
Mr. Graybill?
I have no questions at this time.
All right. Mrs. Fecto? No relation.
No relation. No, I don't have any questions at this time.
All right, Mr. Amatucci?
I was just wondering if you could just enlighten me on this, exactly where is the area that the landscaping waiver is required? Can you show me that?
Basically, for, for this whole, the whole development on this backside, everything you see here that's the wetlands, it's all pretty mature standard trees coming through here, and that comes all the way around, and then all the way down around Coffin Lane. So, there's very little of the development that'll be even visible from Coffin Lane, but almost, that there'll be no, none of this development will be visible from, from Route Four or from any of the, any of the public accessways through here. So, that's, that's the reason, there's, there wouldn't be much, if we did a, if we did a landscaping plan, there would be almost nothing on it. We probably wouldn't suggest any plantings out here. It would only be, you know, the grass that's required for that grass filter to, to function properly, and that's about it, so.
So, even when the leaves, leaves fall and are on the ground, there's, this is still pretty well-screened?
Correct, yep, 'cause the, the major portion of it is, is gonna be screened with this, with the woodland that's, that's in this area here, and that's very thick through there. I know we, if you go out there and walk it, you'll, you'll see, but that's, that's pretty thick through this side. And then on the portion that's kind of in line with the existing, existing storage area, that's all, there's no structure there, so you really won't be able to see it. You'd have to really, you'd have to really look through all the buildings that are, that are going into the existing storage area to even try to see this back lot, but I, I don't believe any of it will be visible through, even in, even with the leaves down.
Thanks, Neil.
Is that back lot gonna be lit up?
Yes, I do have some intention to light around the, the buildings, and we'll, we will have cameras out there.
All right, but no, like in the gravel, the gravel storage area in the back, back, is that gonna be lit up too, or is that like...
Yeah, so, some type of lighting, down lighting, maybe a pole in the center. I'm flexible as far as that, but some type of lighting, yep.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, so, we need to vote on these waivers. So, one, I mean, do we need to do two separate votes? I guess we do, even though the second one is one of those ones that we do all the time. So, the first waiver that we need to vote on is the waiver to waive the landscaping plan. I need a motion to grant the waiver for the landscaping plan?
I'll make the motion that we, that we grant the waiver to the landscaping plan.
Okay, moved by Paul. And a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Amber. Any further discussion on this? Okay, seeing no further discussion, all in favor of granting the waiver on the landscaping plan, please raise your hand. And that is 5-0, so we will grant that waiver. The second waiver is one of those fun technical ones. They're asking, they're seeking a waiver of the plan scale requirement because it is such a large area on the plan. So, I'm looking for a motion to grant the waiver for the plan scale requirement.
I will make the motion to grant the waiver for plan scale requirement.
That's Jerry Graybill's motion, and a second, please?
I'll second that.
All right, seconded by Paul. Any further discussion on this waiver? Seeing no further discussion, I need a vote for the granting of the waiver of the plan scale. All in favor? And that is 5-0. And last but not least, we need a motion for application completedness.
I move that we find the application complete.
I'm gonna take Mike LaRue with the motion. And a second?
I'll second that.
All right, seconded by Amber Fecto. Any further discussion about the application completedness? Okay, seeing nobody come forward, I will take a vote on application complete for the site plan expansion of 565 Portland Street, Route Four self-storage. All in favor? And that is 5-0. Application is complete. How does the board feel about wanting to go out there for a site walk?
I think we should do it.
Mike LaRue wants to go. Where are we going?
The 18th would be, would be worth...
Okay, the 18th, and by then, we will have had, have fallen back an hour, right? So, it's gonna be even darker out. So, is a 4 o'clock site walk going to be okay? Does that work for you, Neil?
Make that work.
All right, so 4 o'clock on the 18th, the site walk, and we will meet back at the Coffin, by Coffin Brook or, or, I mean Coffin Road rather, or by the front area. Where should we meet, Neil?
I think it'd probably make the most sense just to line up on Coffin, on Coffin Lane.
On Coffin Road? Okay, Coffin Lane, whatever.
We can, we can walk right out there, and I'll, I'll have, it'd probably be easiest to have the surveyors just mark the corner, four corners of the larger building.
Okay.
And then, I think that'll be far enough out to, to get a good idea for it. If you, if you want, you want me to mark anything else, just, you can let Ligia know, and you can, you can get that to me, and we'll get out there and mark it.
That sounds great. Thanks, Neil, I appreciate it.
Great.
Thank you, Tanner. I think I can read your name from here.
Yes, thank you.
Public hearing on the 18th as well, so we'll have two public hearings that day? All right, two public hearings, let's get it over with.
Let's get it done.
All right, we're gonna close New Business and move on to the second public comment session. Public comment session is open to any residents or property owners in the town of Burwick under the purview of the Burwick Planning Board, notwithstanding any open applications or agenda items. Hello, and just state your name and your address for the board, please.
My name is Colleen Fleming. I'm a homeowner on Heritage Drive. I live on Lot 8. I was listening to the plan for the addition of homes onto Heritage.
We can't, we can't talk about anything, anything with that plan or the Heritage Plan because they are agenda items.
When can I?
You can at the public hearing, and we don't have, so, so for Heritage Lane, the public hearing for that is going to be on the 18th, and that's when we can, we can take any comments or questions.
So, November 18?
November, yeah, our, in two weeks from today.
Okay.
And the School Street application, so that one is still in sketch plan, so, because...
That's the one that...
That's the one that you wanna talk about. So, that one, we don't even have a public hearing set for yet. So, the, how, the order of business for that is that they're gonna come back, maybe they might come back on the 18th with their new, with their new plan. They might not, they might not come back till December 3rd with their new plan if we can get them onto that agenda.
Okay, can I just ask, what's the best way, what's the best way for us to get some feelings known, I guess, prior to, 'cause we hear like all the sketching and stuff, I'd like, you know...
You can send, send an email into the Planning, planning@burwickmaine.org, something like that.
Yeah, email's the best way.
Yeah, that's probably the best way, but we can't take any comments about it publicly until the public...
Okay, let me just ask a question.
Yes.
So, if the Planning Board proved something back in 2000, and they're using hypotheticals here...
Yeah.
And they want to add homes to an existing development...
Right.
Where the Planning Board has already set the restrictions for lot sizes and whatnot, why would this Planning Board not follow what they had previously laid out?
We can, anybody can amend a subdivision, so, something is, if something is approved, it can be amended.
I would really hope that the Town of Burwick Planning Board wouldn't be that disingenuous.
I'm not sure what you're, okay, I'm not, I'm not sure, okay, yeah. When you, when you come back for that, for the School Street subdivision, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
You said, when, I'm sorry, when is the public hearing?
We don't know, we don't know, we're not even, we're not even close, they don't even have a plan yet. So, when they have a plan that they actually want to create and build...
It just sounded to me like...
Can you speak into the microphone, just so it's...
It just sounded to me like when we're talking about people in the town, like doing sketches for somebody, and that you guys have already made a decision, and you're not, you're not thinking about the people that already live in neighborhoods where something already exists, and now you wanna throw in a million houses.
Right, so, so...
We pay a lot of money to live in neighborhoods.
I, listen, I...
The board upholds that.
Okay, it's, this is not a board decision. Anybody can buy a parcel of land, and they can do with it anything that is in the land use ordinance, which is supported, the, the comprehensive plan supports land use ordinance. I don't wanna get into an argument back and forth, but I'm telling you that anybody can buy a piece of land, and if it is within the, their rights to develop it in the land use ordinance, they can do that. It's not, this is not a board decision. I don't get to make a decision based on what I feel is right. I have to uphold what's in this, and that's what, and that is what we're doing, so you...
And you can, you can follow the, the Planning Board decisions that were already made related to that development.
Absolutely.
The other question I have...
Sure.
Is, is, is the Planning Board, like how are we accounting for all the new houses that are coming in at Burwick in terms of increased, like obviously, the schools are already busting at the seam.
Right.
We dodged a huge bullet by having that huge tax increase.
Yes. Yes.
But what is the town doing to address that issue?
So every time a subdivision comes forward, part of the process, and this is all available online, you can read the subdivision regulations, and this is, this is our bible, so anytime anybody's subdividing anything, part of their application process is that they have to get a letter of capacity from the superintendent of schools. I'm not here to judge, I don't know what's going on, I know what's going on in schools from what I read on Facebook and what I hear from the school board, but I'm not the superintendent, so as a board, that's what we do. We can only get the information from the superintendent.
I appreciate that. Is there any consideration to maybe doing what some of the other towns do when we have developers coming in looking to put in these developments, and charging them an upfront free fee for each lot that they want to develop?
They do, yeah, it's called an impact fee, and we do have that.
And what is the impact fee?
They vary. You can go to the cost recovery schedule on, and it's, it's in here too, it's at the end of the subdivision.
A thousand dollars a bedroom?
Yeah, it's, it's about a thousand dollars a bedroom.
Can we, can we increase that?
You can, you can go to the Board of Selectmen to talk about that.
Just to let you know, that's, that's not correct. It is not a thousand dollars a bedroom. It's not. So it's a thousand dollars open space and a thousand dollars recreation per a three-bedroom house.
Yeah, and that's set by the, that's set by the Select Board, it's not a planning, it's not a planning board.
Well, I would think that the two would work together though, right?
Well, the planning board, we actually went to the Select Board to, this was a project that I spearheaded to go to the Select Board to get impact fees enacted, because we weren't doing that. So we just got them done in 2017. We've been collecting them ever since, and actually, I just did a whole, a whole study on, on all of that, but yes, it can be, but it's, it's not the planning board. It is the people of Burwick have to go to the Select Board and say that they want them increased.
Okay, and how about a moratorium on building?
The people of Burwick have to go to the Select Board and the Comprehensive Plan Committee and say that they want that. This is not a planning board.
This is a passion project of mine. There are four more kids in the school system now than there were in 1989. The, the building, the building happened in the 70s and the 80s and the mid 2000s. We do not have a building problem right now, and I can, I'd be happy to show you the charts that support that.
I just happen to also just wanted to comment that cluster housing is ugly. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Before you run away--
So I, I, Madam Chair--
Yeah, sure.
Just as, because I have not been involved in some of that other stuff, but just as a point of interest, if someone wants a moratorium on development, the state law only allows a moratorium for 180 days till you can fix whatever problem exists under the land use law, and then the Select Board could put an additional 180-day moratorium in place if they felt they were not done fixing whatever needed to be fixed, but a moratorium cannot be put in place in perpetuity, if you will, under state law. It can only be done for 180 days and a potential additional 180 days to fix a problem under the land use laws.
Let me piggyback that. Thank you, Lee J. If there's anybody at home, anybody in the audience that wants more information on how many houses get put up a year in Burwick, please email us. If you also want to be added, I can also send you over cost recovery, I can explain how it works.